Our Father in Heaven, we're thankful, many blessings, we're thankful to be able to live in this town and be town councillors for the people of this town, they are good people. We pray that any decisions that we may make today will be for the benefit of the town. And we say these things in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
We'll call the meeting to order. We'd like to acknowledge Corey from Channel 32 and anybody else that may be zooming in. I want to welcome councillor Bangley and councillor Barnes from the comfort of their easy chairs at home. And we have an agenda, any additions to the agenda that anyone wants to put in there?
Adopted for you.
Okay, the mayor's put forward a motion to adopt the agenda all in favor. All right, moving right along, delegations. Jeff, you want to have Curtis in?
Yeah, so I've asked Curtis to come tonight just to talk about some of the challenges that have come up at the wastewater treatment plant. We've been talking about it since last fall or so. So let me just share screen, councillors Barnes and Bangley, you should be able to see this in just a minute here, once I share the screen.
First of all, I want to say, Curtis, thank you for the thankless jobs that you're doing. Honestly, it's probably one of the least favorite jobs in town, and you're doing it well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Wow, that's a crappy job, but.
So Jill, Jill, can you move the other speakers? You can minimize them, put them at least further off to the side. Yeah, you can minimize them to the left of that, where, yeah.
This one?
Nope, next, there you go. Maybe? There you go, that'll do. So you should be able to just go on the down arrow, Kurt, and I think you're good to go.
Okay, so what I got here for you is a brief description of the components that make up our RBC system at the wastewater treatment plant. This is the main problem, main component that we're having trouble with. After that, I'll talk a little bit about how we've run this plant in the past and how we're running it now because of how often we're having breaks. And then we'll look at a couple of breaks, what they look like. And then I have a short animation on the, how the new system kind of works, the theory behind it. So this first picture, that's the RBC. So we have eight of those within the system. So you can see all the black on there, that's called media, that's where all the bacteria live and grow, do its thing to treat the water. All the gray metal, that's what makes up a frame.
You can pop that off while you're talking.
That old man is breathing hard.
Yeah. That's what makes up the frame, that holds all the media in place. There's a massive shaft that runs through the middle that all these things rotate on, and then a drive system on the left-hand side, a gearbox and a motor and what have you. Here's another picture from the side, you can see the metal, the frame, the black, the So here's a couple pieces of the frame, what makes up the frame. So within the frame, there's 512 of those top pieces at 120 bucks a piece. There's 512 of those next pieces within this system. There you go. So there's 256 of those at about $2,000 a piece to get it manufactured.
Just a touch delays.
Yeah, there's 128 of these at 350 bucks a piece. And all these pieces, what's going on is all these pieces are bending and warping, twisting. All the bolt holes you see, they're all elongated. It's just as these rotate, as these RBCs rotate, the weight on them shifts back and forth from one side to the other, and over time, everything just bends and twists. So this is the media, the blacky sauce, that's one piece of media right there, all the little grooves in it is where the bacteria live, do their thing. There's 23,000 of those in the system, and I don't know what they cost because we've never had to order them before, but we're gonna have to start ordering them pretty quick. What you see there in the next shot is the media all stacked together, and that's what is left of what we have right now. So we'll have to start ordering, figuring out where to get that kind of stuff. So again, here's the RBC, so you can see the frame pieces all around, the media all through it. Here's the drive system, so there's eight motors at 1,500 bucks a piece, and there's eight gearboxes at 40 grand a piece. So I've replaced four or five of those now. Here's the bearings, there's two bearings on each side, so there's 16 in total, at five grand per bearing. So here's our eight RBCs. So the way we've run this in the past is there's a left bank and a right bank, south, north. So we'll run the south bank for a year, meanwhile, during that year, we will drain down the north bank, we'll let them dry out. Now there's thousands and thousands of pounds of water and bacteria and stuff that come off these. And that's as, so you can see as they're rotating, that's where all this weight is shifting around all the time and making everything break on us, basically. So as one side is down for a year, we would dry it out, remove all the weight, we'll do any maintenance, any of that kind of stuff that we have to do on that. And then, a year later, we'll swap the process and keep going. So when I started in 2009, we were fixing two breaks a year, roughly. That number started to increase and hasn't really done too much till about 2015, when we really noticed a great big increase in how many breaks we were having. So by 2019, we were, or sorry, 2018, we were getting about one a month. And so a break, which we'll see a little later here, it takes two to three guys, anywhere from three to six hours to fix it. So we're figuring on a normal break is about $1,200 to get it repaired. We just found a break at 3:30 this afternoon, and that one's gonna be about 1,500 bucks, and it's gonna take the two of us about six hours to fix it, we think. So in 2019, RBC number six there, it really started to break on us, we'd fix it and the next day it'd be broken again. We fix it and two days later it'd be broken again, and we went like that for a couple of days. Till we got, we decided to manufacture some parts for it, some parts that we don't normally change out on a normal break. And we switched over to the south side, the 1234. So while we were running, we had the guys come in, two guys, they ripped the RBC apart, pulled it all down, one section of that, so let's say the left section. And we brought in a welder, he ground everything down right to the shaft, he spent two days in there grinding and welding, welding on new parts onto these RBCs. And now we have that repaired done. In early 2020, the south side, 1234, we were getting four breaks a week on that. So now we have RBC number six on the north fixed, we shut everything down, we switched everything back to the north side, and that ran pretty good for a couple of weeks. Unfortunately, number six breaks the most often. And specifically where they did that repair. So that is early 2020. So by the end of 2020, we are not, we were getting three breaks a week on that side, be it eight, seven, six, five. Number six the most often, the one that we did do some work on. So in early 2021, we started up both sides of the plant. So now our plant is running at 100% capacity. We did that because there's only so much food in the water, and now we can take the weight and disperse it between left and right side. So since we've done that, we've actually slowed down, our breaks have slowed down quite a bit. We have 13 this year so far.
Five months.
This is a look at one of the breaks here, just one of the components all bent up. This one's a pretty simple one, it took us, you know, an hour and a half to fix it, wasn't really that big of a deal. But you can see, like, each of those parts, those were 120 bucks a piece plus the time. You can see the media's falling out there. This is another break we had, this one's a little more, little worse, quite a few, four, five, six pieces, I can't remember what happened here, but they're all roughly the same when they break. Here's all the media falling out into the pit below. Here's what's happened to the media, this one's pretty good, we just tore a hole in the middle of it, sometimes we shear an edge completely clean, we'll wreck, it all depends somewhere between zero to 20 of these every time we have a break. Here's one we found at 3:30 today. So it's just all bent up, this one's gonna cost roughly about 1,500 bucks, it'll take the two of us about six hours to fix it. And then just some other parts that we've pulled off that I just got a shot of just to show you kind of how that's all bending up. Those should all look like those original pieces I showed you the first couple of slides. And now this one here, you can see the green spots on our catwalk, this is where the RBC is broke, swung around so hard that it's actually dented our catwalk. So basically, you don't want to be standing there when that thing lets go.
Can I just ask you?
Yeah, sure.
So when one of these breaks, so today at 3:30?
Yeah.
You switch to the other side and fix that the next day?
Yes, so that's, exactly, that's part of the reason we have to have both sides of the plant started up right now. We can't, we can't fix these fast enough to maintain good treatment. So you're exactly right, we'll break one side, we'll make all the water go to one side, then we'll break that side and we'll make all the water go back. So it's just a balancing act trying to get, make sure our treatment stays in compliance. Because you're looking at, you send untreated wastewater to a stream, and I got a, I know a company that did that, they sent roughly 500 cubic meters to the stream, their fine was about $280,000. And after they got done the year and a half of investigation and going through court and ending up in court with a bunch of other people, there were told that their next fine starts at a million dollars if they send any more liquid untreated to the river.
How does Victoria Montreal get away with it?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So that's the breaks.
Is that everything?
The next thing is just kind of what we're proposing to go in place, it's called an MBBR system, removing bed biological reactor. This is the media, so we have those very big black sheets, this is what they have for media. So what I have here next is just a little animation on the principles behind it. Now, don't get too caught up in the way it looks, it won't be the same kind of system that goes in our place, but what's important to see here is just the basic principle, and specifically, that there's no moving parts in this system. There's no movement, nothing to break, exactly, the mechanical maintenance is very, very minimal.
Let me work that from here, Curtis, and just see if we can get this going proper. I don't know how the volume's gonna go, but we're gonna find out.
The ideal MBBR is a state-of-the-art fixed film biological process used in municipal and industrial applications for BODV and COV removal as well as ventilation and deventification. One concept of aligning the moving bed biofilm reactor or MBBR process is for the degree of pretreatment which shaves off 60% to 80% of the in-bod VODV all while lowering the loads of the component of the triode or the force for EOTW. The MBBR process is a 1% of the process, meaning the flow is maintained by the induced fluid flowing outside of the tank. This allows for the reactor to reach its maximum retention top. And for it does not have moving parts that require maintenance. First and foremost, each reactor has specially designed submerge free biology by the providing surface for bacteria or biofilm to grow and thrive. Bacteria will grow on the media in life, allowing the MBBR to be very flexible and self-regulated. If an event were to occur such as a giant pH swing, the media will not lose all those layers of layers of bacteria, giving the MBBR to under-pretreatment waste of waste and convert soluble materials via bio-mass which will be removed downstream via a cell separation system. An MBBR will be used in your COV removal or nitrogenation is a long-standing system, meaning oxygen is introduced to the reactor to allow bacteria growth. Oxygen is brought into the tank by the microsensors, air-based air-based airization panels. The airization panels strategically placed inside the tank to have coverage throughout the entire body of the reactor and provide the necessary mixing, maximum treatment during the reactor's retention top. Stains overflow and drain to prevent the media from sticking in the reactor. The continuous movement created by the media in the tank scours the stream and minimizes the disposition of solids which will be created in the headloss. Even though the MBBR is robust and capable of handling various variations, there can be times especially industrial variations where additional nutrients will easily be supplied. In those cases, a lower phosphorus source may be needed to be a proper ratio for the bacteria to thrive and lose the desired amount of soluble liquids. Anti-foam may also be needed if the waste is treated for use. The world waterworks like.
That's about it, that's about it, that's really important there.
So one of the things about the MBBR plant is weakening, or at least one of the things we've looked at, is you can increase what we, how much we can treat by 50% right now without increasing the building size. So same footprint, it just treats a lot more than the RBCs ever will.
So let me ask you something, those are covered tanks then, and a tank could be rectangular?
They won't be covered, they would be open, yeah.
That's what I was wondering.
Yeah, they would be open there. Just, it's the same process as the RBCs are now, you just remove all the mechanical movement in it.
Wade, question?
Yeah.
On your, on your tanks, are they gonna go into the same space as the RBCs?
Yes, that's, I mean, we haven't quite got that far yet, but that's, I mean, the proposal is that they would fit in the exact same tanks.
And we don't have to use a liner or anything like that?
That'll all come, like I said, don't get too caught up on what the MBBR is right now, because that really hasn't been looked at. The main thing I wanted to point out here is just that there's no moving parts to this. You know, I went over how many different moving parts there is in the RBC, there's 512 of these and 512 of those, there's not that kind of stuff within, in this newer system.
Okay, my next question, Wade, can you, or Curtis, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Curtis, can you replace one side at a time and get full functioning treatment?
Yes, yes, I believe that's all part of it, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, other question?
That was actually my question.
What's the cost?
How many tanks would we have to have in order to replace the place?
So it would all go in the same system, and it all depends on who, what company you get to bring in. They're all gonna have their own setups and ideas. The ones we're looking at now, each RBC section has about nine tanks in it, it's three, three runs with three tanks in it. And each tank has, depending on whose system you go with, you can get different aeration and different media in each tank.
So just second part, is that okay? So would you have the same kind of system where you would have maybe three tanks on the side, three tanks on the other, and you just run?
Yes, that would, that would be, I mean, that's kind of what we do now with the RBCs, we just run one, or, you know, before everything started breaking, we would just run one and have one in backup, ready to go. And that would be kind of the same idea, I guess, and that all depends on how this all goes, right?
Okay, good, thanks.
That was Brown.
All right, just two questions. So are, so is, this is the new way of doing it, other communities, cities, municipalities, they're already doing it this way?
There's a lot of different technologies out there to treat wastewater. This one, as far as I'm concerned, is the simplest, the most like what we have now. If you start getting into other treatment systems like membranes, for instance, now we have to have a level three plant, which is fine by me, we just have to go to school and get our level three and talk about raises.
I think Jeff has a plan going forward in terms of, what are the next steps? So Jeff, do you want to share?
Sure, so I was talking to councillor Selk when we were reviewing this, Curtis and I have met with a couple of different people, and Brandon and I have met with a few engineering firms on how do we, how do we move forward with this? Because one of the challenges we have is we don't know exactly what we need. And so one of the big challenges is if you put out a request for proposal on something and say, hey, construction firms or engineering firms, we want you to come in and build us a new treatment plant. The fear is they price so much risk into it because they don't know exactly what you need. So the working plan we have right now, and Curtis and I haven't talked about this since the last couple of days, but, is that we're looking to put out a request for proposal for engineering firms to come in and do an analysis of our current facility, an assessment of what we need, and a proposal of what they think, with some options, maybe here's option one and two, of what we should do in our facility for sewer water, or sewer treatment. And to have a preliminary cost. And that's where the scope of that RFP would end, that's it. Now what we have is, we as a group can say, yeah, we like what they've proposed here as option one or option two, we think that price is something we can do, and then we put out the RFP for someone to come and do detailed design and construction of that option. Because now we know what it is we want. Right now, we're in a spot where, and Curtis and I have talked about this, we think MBBR is probably the right technology for us, because we can retrofit our current building. When we get into some of this other stuff, then it starts to be iffy whether or not we literally would have to, you know, tear the whole roof off to do the retrofit, or whether, you know, what we can do. So we have a couple of firms who have told us that they think we can easily retrofit our current building, if we do MBBR. We've also had the receiving water study that's just completing, Alberta Environment doesn't have their report back to us yet. That will also tell us what is the nature of the wastewater that we're treating and where we're struggling to get proper treatment. And the treatment process can address that as well. So for example, and we have pretty, I think, run-of-the-mill effluent, I think, if we had some industrial producer that was putting some very volatile stuff down the sewer, we may need a very specific kind, but we don't thankfully. But I know, Curtis, correct me if I'm wrong, we sometimes have troubles with nitrogen or phosphorus levels going out to the river.
They can be, yes.
So we want to make sure that's addressed in the kind of treatment we put in, but we were looking originally at doing potentially a design build where we were gonna bring in an engineering firm to do everything from, tell us what you think, to oversee construction, to commission this thing. But right now, I'm leaning towards actually doing it in two parts. And then we can have a number of firms give us, you know, a proposal on just figuring out what it is we actually need.
Mayor, councillor Brown.
So Jeff, in doing in two parts, that mitigates the risk involved with the whole project, is that the intent?
So those that bid on the second phase aren't guessing as to what we need. They know they're coming in to construct a specific system that we have already predetermined. And there's preliminary design to support their proposal. Their job is to detail design, construction, and commissioning.
Okay, so if I could have a follow-up?
Sure.
So Jeff and Curtis, we understand the issue, I think it's pretty clear, and thank you for your presentation. Now the timeline.
Yeah, so Curtis wants construction to start tomorrow, but we're not there. So I think we are probably a couple of months out to have the phase one stage, the proposals. And I would like to see, in my opinion, and again, I know it's not as quick as Curtis would want, but I would hope by the end of summer that that phase one is done. We know what it is we need, we've made the choice, we have some costs.
Okay.
And then we immediately proceed to phase two, which is the construction portion.
Okay, councillor Brown?
That was my question, okay, so.
Councillor Selk?
Yeah, the mayor's got a question. The mayor's got a question, then councillor Bangley and councillor Barnes.
Thank you.
So I don't like doomsday scenario, but what you are presenting is lucky as the two portion, the two banks didn't break at the same time. But what if?
So right now, we can maintain it, it's, we might have to get some help to do it. My biggest concern is I have other environmental and legal stuff to do within the town, you know, up at the water plant, I can't be turned into a full-time RBC fixer. But as long as we have some help, then we can maintain, and if the town doesn't mind spending some money. So up to now, we haven't really had to spend a lot of money because we had enough parts, we had enough parts to last till after we retired, the way it used to go. So we're just gonna have to start making, getting stuff made for us and fixing them.
Okay, so as a follow-up, does a budget reflect the need for extra expenses?
So it's not abnormally different than our normal maintenance in those departments, and we'll just watch it as we get later into the year.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Bangley?
Curtis, this will be a dumb question.
There's no dumb.
Our new outflow line is capable of handling this new treated water, there should be no problems with the liner or anything like that?
Yeah, just because we put in a new system doesn't really mean we're getting any more water at the moment. That's a question for years down the road when the town grows, I guess.
But, but the, but the effluent that's coming out of that plant, after the new system is put in, will not affect the liner of that new outflow line or anything like that?
No, it won't, no.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Same output.
Okay, councillor Barnes?
I was just wanting to know if we've got a ballpark figure of what the costs are gonna be?
We've got some very preliminary ballpark figures, let's put it that, we're anywhere from 2.8 to 3.3. We've had two different groups just look at it on a super preliminary level, no detailed design of any kind. So 2.8 to 3.3 is where we're at right now.
And so how do we propose to pay for that?
Well, it's coming out of your wages.
Councillor Perdiems, mostly, councillor.
It's getting serious here.
No stop for tonight.
Reserve and grant.
So we've applied for a 50 cent grant from Alberta Water Wastewater already, based on the preliminary estimates, but we gotta get things a little more shored up for them. So that's the predominant funding right now, is if we get 50 cents from the province on that.
Okay, so where do we get the other million and a half?
Well, we've had this discussion for a bit, our major utility capital reserve has been the topic of a lot of conversation, and there's about 1.1 something in that, I think, right now.
Okay, so we do have some money there.
We're not totally funded yet.
No, we're not all the way there.
But we're getting there.
About 600,000.
600,000. Okay, any other questions? If not, Curtis, we thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Councillor Selk, I've asked him to stick around for just a minute if you don't mind jumping to 7A.
Okay.
Just because he may have an opinion on that.
If it's 2.8 or.
So with Jeff's suggestion, we're gonna move to 7A, the raw water reservoirs, and I think you've all read what the issue is there, fishermen versus town employees, is that a fair way of putting it, Curtis?
Not town employees, just fishermen in general.
Fishermen in general.
To me, fisherman is fisherman, town or not.
I think councillor, one of the things is, as some of you may remember, the reservoirs have always had fish in them, because we pump straight in from the Lee or the St. Mary's or levee irrigation, so that would be, I mean, ultimately, pain in the lake in the belly. So we've always had fish in there. And a few years ago, Bart started adding triploid trout in mostly the east one, I believe, yeah, mostly in the east reservoir, to enhance the water quality before it goes in the plant, and that's shown to be quite successful, that was very helpful. Well, with that, brought a number of people who like to fish for triploid trout, and Bart was very kind to them, and he accommodated them to a large degree, and that benefit quickly became an expectation. So we're doing construction in the reservoirs right now, and so on about day two of construction, I had some gentlemen in the office wondering why they couldn't go fishing. And I explained, it's because it is a water reservoir, not ye olde fishing hole. And they weren't very pleased with that, but the fact of the matter is, we need, I'm not saying that Curtis is less accommodating than Bart, that's not what I'm getting at, but what happens is we will have literally dozens and dozens of people show up, climb the fence, climb under the fence, go through, and we don't know if they're using lead weights, we don't know if they're using lead lures, we don't know what's going in that water at any given time, and if they're up there on a Saturday, Sunday, well, the guys may not be working, and who's overseeing this, like Curtis mentioned to me before the meeting, that he'll have, you know, dozens of people phone him on any given Saturday to let them in, all day long. And my feeling right now is we just installed, or we're just installing, some ultrasonic, what are we calling those things, devices, for lack of a better word?
Ultrasonic, wait, yeah, I'm not 100% sure.
Algae control devices.
Well, they're managing the algae growth within there, and so we've had. had to run power, and these things are now installed in the corners of the reservoirs. And it's just, there's getting to be more infrastructure in there that what I don't need is a kid using it as a diving board or standing on it to get just a little closer to the center of the reservoir. Or, you know, now we've got electricity running to the water, and it, it's just, and I gave you guys a copy of the, the guidance documents.
Right.
And, and one of the lines is fishing will not be permitted in raw water reservoirs.
A second. So, Curtis, I just wanna know what your, what's your feedback on this? Because I have my own opinion, and it's like, this isn't Flanagan's Fishing Hole.
My opinion is no fishing whatsoever, ever.
Okay.
Yeah, that's right.
Uh, my, my comment will go along with that. The standards and guideline for municipal waterworks lay out an awful lot of, uh, sections that refer to the safety and security of the premises and of the water reservoirs, especially if they're outside.
There's a reason there's a lock gate.
Right. And so, uh, it kinda disturbed me to think that we actually have access to those reservoirs, freely access, all by those who are infringing the property by climbing over the fence to satisfy their fishing needs. And we, as a town, should be concerned about protecting, uh, the quality, safety of the water and the security of the plant. So, it seems to me that the two don't kinda match, and I would support your position.
So, having said that, Jeff, can we do the, do you need a motion from us, or can we just instruct, uh, administration to take care of this issue?
Yeah, I think we just wanted your support in kinda what was our position already to make sure that if you got calls, that you understood the context of, of that. It, it should have probably been by default that people weren't accessing those freely. And I don't wanna give the impression that everyone was climbing the fence. We allowed it for some time. And, but I think it's time we, we take a step back there.
All good things come to an end, Council Barnes.
Question?
Council Brown, and then yourself, Council Banger.
So, I think, I mean, it breaks my heart to hear that you're getting phone calls on the weekend. That should be our job, not your job. I apologize for that. Um, but I do think if in fact we're saying we're not going to do this, that that might be something the mayor you could bring up in one of your COVID discussions. No more fishing, but go outside and breathe the air. I mean, no, but I feel like it does need to be a public thing because Joe Blow's not just going to just stop doing it because those are good-sized trout. I have seen them.
Yeah.
Yes.
So, I feel like they're, whether it's.
We actually had a lock on it that they could get in. They had a code and could get it. So, like you said, it wasn't like lots of people were climbing the fence. We have found a couple, but most people were going in because we allowed them to go in.
But the problem is, they have been allowed in. So, the expectation is there now. So, I feel like if we're going to support this and say no, then there needs to be a blast of media so that people will stop calling you.
Yeah.
And know what, no means no, essentially, right?
Yeah.
No fishing.
Council Banger, then Council Drew. Council Banger?
Uh, uh, Jeff, question for you. Where we have developed a fish pond, I'm concerned about our liability if somebody gets hurt out there or drowns. It'd be like your backyard swimming pool, I think. Where we've developed, we have to be very careful about liability aspects.
Okay.
Signage.
Council Drew?
Um, should there be signage there, instructing people and doing that kind of stuff? That's the plan? Okay.
Okay. I think it's safe to say that, Jeff, you have the support of council to go ahead and lock.
Get those inevitable calls. You have the context. Thank you.
Any?
Could I just ask a question? In that report, it talks about fences seven feet high. How high is our fence?
I'd have to measure it. We got barbed wire along the fence on the top facing out, so if you add that, it probably is seven feet.
Yeah, a bit close.
They talk about three row of barbed wire.
Yeah.
We do.
And that's on there.
Yeah.
And then it talks about a space before you can even come near the reservoir. It almost gives me the feeling that there is two, uh, two fans with a corridor in between.
That we probably don't quite have if that's the way you're reading that.
So, that's what it talks about, and I'm thinking, I'm not even sure we deserve.
And.
With suspects in mind.
Some of these are guidelines and not regulation.
Yeah, and so also, I mean, it gave me the feeling it was intended for mega-size, uh, outfit, maybe not a smaller town outfit, but.
Okay. In essence, it's about signage and everything else to make sure that it's secure. So, anyway, secure it, then we're done with this.
And I felt that there is electricity nearby. I should almost have that also there because electricity and water don't match very well. You get zapped pretty good.
Yeah. Council Barnes?
So, you know, back about four or five years ago, when Police Lake shut down regular fishing and made it a trophy lake, and then they shut down fishing, there was a lot of people upset, but they had to be accountable to the government, and they give them the reasons why. We are a municipal government. We give them our reasons why, and they have to abide by them. There's lots of places to go fishing. The river, Lees Creek, there's just all kinds of places to go, to go fishing. So, it's, it's not gonna, you know, hurt them to go get in the vehicles or go somewhere or just walk down to the creek. There's lots of places in southern Alberta that fish, all kinds of them.
Okay, thanks. Curtis, thanks for your input. We appreciate the work you do, both at the water and wastewater treatment plants.
Thank you.
All right.
Thanks, Curtis.
See ya. Thank you.
Talk to you.
See you guys. Hey, moving on to item five, adoption of minutes from our April the 6th CCW. Council Drew?
I'll make a motion to adopt the April 6th, 2021 CCW minutes.
Okay, all in favor? Very. All right, number six, bylaw and policy. Jeff, six A, do you wanna give us some context?
Yeah, so, so no resolutions tonight, obviously. I just wanted to bring it to your attention. Um, so, you'll recall the Grotto Building, um, uh, years ago was designated as a municipal historic resource. That's a preface to being designated as a provincial historic resource. Uh, that was the work of, of Mrs. Kay Drau. Uh, she has since passed away. Her daughter, Seton, is the owner of the building. Seton has contacted me. You can see her, her email was the very first thing in the background, or we've talked a bit. She has some plans for the building. She wants to do quite a bit of work on the, on the property. Uh, the challenge is, under her agreement in designating that, any, under the Historic Resources Act, she cannot repair, rebuild, remove any of those things without written permission of the municipality. And so, we talked through that, and, and her position is that she isn't interested particularly in the designation for her purposes. And she's asking that the council consider rescinding that bylaw so that she doesn't have to get the town's permission every time she wishes to repair something in the building. So, for example, the windows, I think originally are wood windows. If she wishes to put in a, uh, you know, a high-efficiency vinyl window, well, then she'd need permission to do that. And I'm not sure necessarily that I wanna start managing that either, but, uh, if you feel that there is a social reason or a community reason why that should maintain its designation, then this is where that needs to be discussed. Otherwise, you have the owner of the building asking to remove the designation. And so, I'd like just a comment on that before we bring it to a council meeting motion.
I think it's, I don't know, it's obvious to me that I'm not sure why we would wanna get in the way of an owner wanting to do something to their own building. Mayor?
I agree with that, and I also think that it doesn't appear that she intends to change the exterior of the looks of that building at this point. Or is it part of a design as part of the historical building?
So, I'm not privy to her eventual plans with it. Um, so I couldn't say, Mayor.
All right. So, I mean, may, maybe in time, it would be nice if there was a plaque that was designated as what it was. There is a lot of interest in that. That used to be the old Bank of Montreal. And, uh, I mean, there are a lot of, uh, places all over Europe where on a building you have a plaque that explains what it was, but doesn't, it's not a historical building of the day anymore.
So, Council Brown?
But if in fact we rescind this, we don't have the opportunity to tell her anything. So, if she chooses to do anything to it, we, we, we washed our hands of it essentially. If she wants to put a plaque in, that's her call in respect for her mother or whatever because we loved Kay.
Absolutely.
But, uh, by rescinding it, we, we essentially are saying, do what you wanna do.
I agree with you. Yeah.
So, Jeff, this'll come forward to next council.
Yeah, so I'll just bring it to next council meeting, and, and you can start making resolutions at that point.
Okay, good.
Amen.
Council Barnes?
So, with, with this, uh, building, uh, my, my, my comment is that nobody should be restricted to do what they want. If there's any major stuff that, that includes like plumbing or electrical or anything like that, uh, structural things, they would have to come to Nolan for permits anyways. And so, I think that we don't need to come, have her come to Jeff or the town council to get permission when she can just, if she needs to, she can go to Nolan and get that. And then if it's an MBC thing, then it can happen there. So, I, I have no problem with rescinding.
Okay, so administration will take care of that.
You'll see it again next week.
Perfect. Jeff, six B. A draft bylaw, an overrated bylaw.
Yeah, so again, no resolutions tonight. I just wanted to be able to free to have a little conversation about it before. Uh, there, the, the goal here was 2% revenue increase in the budget. And so, this little complicated sheet here, it's, I'm always, and I'm sorry, councilors, Barnes and Banger, you don't have this. We were just working through it a bit today. Um, so I'll, I'll walk you through it verbally here a little bit. What it's showing is that when, and if you go down to the bottom in 2021, we need to, we need to, uh, collect 3.723 million, which is a municipal, school, and home for the aged tax. It is split out 2.729 in residential, 922, uh, in non-residential, and then, um, yes, 922,000 in non-residential. So, the mill rate in order to accommodate those amounts for 2021 would need to be 10.4733 and 16.9656 respectively. So, a 2% revenue increase, and then you add in education, makes for a rate increase of 2.25 and 2.41. So, that rate, because it's, it, percentage-wise goes up a little bit more. And then in the next category over, if you look, we just do an average. So, we take all of our residential properties, all their assessment, average, average residential assessment, 186.5, will be a $35 increase based on that average. And on non-residential, 231 would be a $45 increase based on that average. So, these are not a perfect science because everyone falls somewhere above or below that. Everybody does. But I wanted you to just have a look at that real quick, um, before this comes back next week because you will need to do all three readings, um, at the next meeting so that we can get the, uh, the assessment notices out.
Mayor?
The only thing that I, I would, uh, observe that I observed is that with the ICF, we had some, uh, revenues that came to us. The intent was to reduce the taxes, but as you can see, it's not. It has been absorbed and spent for other things. And that's unfortunate in some ways. That's a comment.
Yeah, we, we had quite a bit of conversation here about, we, you know, it's offsetting those current things, but then we have other new costs, and, and, and this is where we landed to balance it.
Because that would have reduced the taxes. I mean, not counting the 40,000 that gave us, that's the 96,000, that would have reduced the tax by 3%.
Correct.
Let us not forget, we're getting downloaded on by the province, so the taxes are gonna go up anyhow because we gotta pay for policing, et cetera, now.
Yeah, 78, uh, well, the 101,000.
For this year.
From, uh, the police is about the same amount as what.
Yours, yeah.
Yeah, your ICF honestly washed out your policing in this year.
Yes.
And then you had all the other 800 line items with inflationary pieces or other priorities that you're seeing as well, so.
But we can see very rapidly, I mean, this year, that's what it is, is, isn't, I mean, it's, I don't know how it's palatable, but it's palatable, uh, somewhat. But we can very rapidly see what next year will look like and the year after, when we cannot absorb the policing cost through that, uh, small increase of revenue we have.
Council Selk, if I could just on that, and this is jumping off just a bit, Mayor, but when we do committee reports in two meetings' time, it would, we should talk about the motion to UMA from Sterling to send policing as a requisition and not to be coming directly for municipal taxes. That isn't, we don't need to deal with it tonight, but we were in a meeting yesterday where Sterling's putting, would like to put forward a message, uh, a resolution that we are requisitioned like we are with education tax for the policing so that we can list it as a separate line item on the tax notices. Because right now, you can't. You lump it in, and then you can send out communication to try and educate, but, but it's not actually coming as a requisition. It's just, hey, we'll send you a bill sometime in the fiscal year, so tax for it. And municipalities are saying, no, no, requisition us. Because when you do that, the province determines how it's applied between your non-residential, your residential, et cetera. And it is, it doesn't change anyone's financial piece, but politically for you on, on the ground locally, it is certainly more, you have a little bit, a different approach to it. So, that is something that will be.
Transparency, right? The, the government does not allow us transparency in disclosure of this amount within our tax requisit-, uh, our tax mill rate. And that's definitely unfortunate.
So, we'll talk more about that, not to sidetrack, but, but it is something that'll come up in the next couple of meetings.
Thank you.
Yeah. Well, Jeff, it's interesting that you actually list it as a policing requisition in the budget.
Yeah, we put it in our budget as such, but we're not allowed to put it on the tax assessment as such.
Yeah.
Can I just?
It's what we can do.
Council Selk, can I ask a follow-up question? Maybe now? Is that possible in a letter that goes along with, uh, the taxes that there is always a, a kinda update letter? Could it be possible to list that as one item of interest in that letter?
That's being developed right now, I think, Jill. I saw it getting worked on today. So, yeah, we'll, we'll make sure that's in there. I know the county's sending out a letter that's right with the assessment saying, police costs are this, and it has impacted this, you know? They're very, they're being very descriptive about it, so.
Point, Mayor, we wanna lay this dog at the feet where it came from.
Well, do you know, where it came from, it doesn't smell so good.
No. Well, I don't think you even wanna pet it either, but I'm just saying.
So, one thing I would just ask, and I know, I don't, I'm not trying to sound like humorous or anything here, but if you don't have anything you want to change tonight, I'm really hoping we're passing a mill rate bylaw next Tuesday. And now is your chance, 'cause you still have time to call a special meeting if something's awry. That's, I need to throw that out there because if we get cold feet a week from now, it's a bit more of a challenge to rectify.
Okay. The only comments.
We'll be here next week.
All right. The only comments I might have is that if you look at the non-residential, which is essentially the business community, they're going to feel the impact. Because if you look at, uh, from 2017, we have been very generous with them. 2017, uh, there was, it was flat rate. 2018, they had a negative rate. 2019, we passed on that negative rate again. 2020, we brought it up, but you can see over three years, they only had a half of a percent increase also. So, this year will be definitely, one year, was they going to definitely feel the impact? And I think we are going to hear about it. So, it would be important in the context of the other years to help them understand that all the other years, the residential were the one who took the brunt of the increases.
Non-residential's moved 1% in five years.
Right.
So 0.2% a year. Now, I can't speak to assessment year to year, but just purely rate, it's been one percent in over five years.
So that is something we need to understand to be able to address that with the business community, because they won't like it. I can tell you, they won't like it at all.
Well, Jeff, perhaps this forms part and parcel of your information package when you send out tax notices.
Yeah, this one gets a little complicated. We might be able to find something that just shows the trend anyway. Yeah.
Yeah, maybe a graph, simply a graph would be something, because the residential has taken the brunt of the utility increase and of the tax increase for the past five years.
We'll look at that, Mayor.
Okay. Anything else? If not, we'll move on to seven B. Municipal service highway signs. Councillor Banger, you want to speak to that?
This is a, this is a very interesting one for me. I've spent some time on it, not because I have time. And I had, I've had two businesses so far confront me about the service lines out on the highway. And the cost involved in displaying what services we have to our individuals coming into our community or going past our community. So I sat and thought about this. I brought to this to the past council, and nothing was done. So I'm thinking, okay, where do we go from here? There are $2,500 a sign to put a sign out on the highway that offers what your service is. That is per business, per service. So if Councilor Barnes has a real estate sign out there, coming from either direction, is 2,500 bucks. So we're looking at $7,500, I believe, Jeff, if my figures are not right.
It says for five years, isn't it?
Okay, now, what I'm proposing is this. I would like to take this to the pardon me?
Chamber of Commerce?
Our commerce, Chamber of Commerce. Now, Councillor Salk, you serve on that, don't you?
No.
No.
No one does.
Oh.
No, we don't have a councillor on the chamber. Councillor?
Oh, that's too bad. Then we can discuss this more fully, I hope. And what I'm saying is, why are we asking our businesses to put that kind of money out? Why don't we support our businesses and start running something like a real quick little jig? What does Cardston have to offer you? And then, and then we base the costs of that television break, whether it be five minutes after Global Mail or something like that. Because I can remember Coldale doing it years ago, and I believe one other town did it. And the town, or the business, the town, I'm sorry, the municipal fair, covered the cost, the majority of the cost. And I'm just thinking, you know, okay, taking the example of Councillor Barnes, can I use you, Councillor Barnes?
Sure.
Let's say he wants to put an ad up there that he is, he is, his real estate office does this and that. We go to him, we negotiate a price, and say, Dennis, you're going to get so many minutes for so many dollars. And actually film Dennis going through the process of showing homes, how he has to do the comparative market values and so forth. And all of our businesses in town could use that, all of our businesses, right from the construction right up. And then say after something, after some of these blibs, get a hold, get a hold of your friends, come to Cardston. Are you ready to build in Cardston? A town that offers you all of these things. And if we did that blib for so many months, you know, it's going to cost us some money, but at the same token, I think it will make people open their eyes and say, man, they got a beautiful golf course. I happened to come home from Leffridge, and Jan and I were driving around. And the other day, when it was 50 above, we had more families out on that golf green than I've seen in a few years, in the par, in the golf par. And I thought to my, driving range, I'm sorry, and I thought to myself, fantastic, let's film this. We are also, right now, getting, people coming into our campground. I think we got two or three new trainers down there, as of yesterday or today. They're starting to look and see what Cardston has. And I think we, I think we need, I think we need to advertise what we have and not wait for the stranger to come into town to try to find what we have. We have some new businesses. We have our Main Street is starting to jump. We have some new building going on. And to me, we have a brand-new plant just east of Cardston. These people, I think, I think if you're a business person and you've got some business minds, I think it would work to our advantage big time. So it's just a thought.
So, Councillor Banger, I need some clarification. Are you suggesting this go on the local channel? Or are you suggesting this go on our billboard in front of the office?
We could put, Councillor, that's a good question. But we could put it on our local channel. We could put it on our billboard out front. But I'm saying that we need to contact somebody like Global News or somebody like that and find out how much it would cost us to do a three-minute clip or a two-minute clip or a five-minute clip every night for, who knows? And then the cost would be worked out by the Chamber of Commerce if that business, you know, can afford it. I think they can afford that more than they can afford a $2,500 sign.
Well, I'm not sure that it's council's position to do advertising for businesses. I think it's the businesses' responsibility. However, the Economic Development Committee has suggested that we put a clip up on our electronic billboard for advertising each business. And they'll be featured there, and then they'll be featured in the paper. So the paper will feature them and we'll feature them, and that's something that well, Angel's going to bring it to you, Jeff, to bring to council to talk, so.
As you say, I've heard about it. We had a little hiccup because we lost Elizabeth at the paper.
Oh, you're kidding.
So she was going to be the one that hid Elizabeth from the paper.
Oh.
So she was going to be the one to do up and do all the interviews and do all that. So Angel's just working through that.
Okay, so, but it's in the works, where we're going to feature a business a week or a business a month, whatever, and it's going to be shown there and it'll be featured in the paper at the same time. So we're already kind of working on that.
But you made a statement that, Councillor, that it wasn't our position as a council to, I can't remember how you said it.
Well, we're not going to be paying for Global to do advertising, but we can do something that then meet something that needs the business community without incurring costs with a television network.
Okay, and but there's only one concern, and I'll voice it right now. If somebody doesn't start something for people coming to Cardston, people are not going to go and stop at Cardston when they go through to Calgary, when they go through to Waterton Park or something like that. I think somehow we need to get out what's happening in Cardston. Because we've got a lot of things going on in Cardston. If you sit down and start itemizing all the stuff that's going on, there is a lot of things going on in Cardston that only Cardston residents know. So we need to advertise Cardston somehow.
Councillor Brown?
I like some of your ideas, Councillor Banger. We talked about this as council at one of our strategic planning meetings. We brought up the fact, and Councillor Salk's kind of talked about it. We brought up the idea of having, whether we did it one business a month, or remember, we talked about spotlighting them and trying to do that. But the Chamber of Commerce, I feel like this should be a huge part of them. In years past, when Cindy was president, she did a great job of trying to work social media and get out the idea of all the things, like Councillor Banger said, of all the things that were happening around Cardston. So I feel like, Councillor Salk, like he said, I don't necessarily think it's our job to pay for these things, but I do think it's important to get businesses out. But Councillor Barnes, or Banger, I can say that on our new website, if you look at it and you go under Businesses, they have, the town has a list of all of the businesses, like a business directory, right on our town page. And we also have, and I don't know if it's the Remington Center that did that video, Jeff, do you remember? There's a video that they did.
Yeah.
And it was of Lee Creek Golf Course. It was like.
Jerram Scott.
Yeah, for the town of Cardston.
We're working on another one with them, some stuff for this year right now, too.
I mean, essentially, I mean, it's very similar to what Councillor Banger is saying, but I agree with you-ish. That there are some things that we could do.
Thank you. That's it.
Any other comments or questions, Councillor?
Yeah, I'm just looking on the town website, and I know a lot of people who come, are coming to town will reach out through webpages and look at things. And I mean, I just called up my business to see if I was there, and there's a whole bunch of other ones. I mean, there is something like that here, and I don't know. I mean, if we're advertising in town here on our billboard, people in town are going to see that, but people outside of the town aren't going to see that. So I would think that they would come to this business directory, but it's still a good idea, but I think this is where I would probably go. If I was going to a town, I'd be looking at their webpage and seeing what they have to offer and that kind of stuff, but that's just me.
Any other comments? If not, we'll move on.
I know that advertising on Global, et cetera, is fairly expensive, and most people don't watch it anymore. They're going to see a lot more on the social media than they will be on a regular channel TV anymore. I can't remember the last time I watched Global, so that just might be me.
Good. Seven C, summer events. Jeff, do you want to?
Just starting to talk about, and again, Premier Kenny's talking right now, and I don't know what that is, but just starting to think about what we want to do as far as some of the upcoming events, like Canada Day Party in the Park. I mean, obviously, it's what we can do under restrictions. There have been some communities, for example, we met Sterling has already said their pools closed for the whole year, no matter what. I would think it sounds like Raymond's following suit of just not opening. The problem is, is they don't know how to keep lifeguards, just waiting until they know, right? So they don't think they'll have staff. And then some of the events, it's all still up in the air. I don't have, I'm not seeking any specific feedback tonight, because there's so much we just don't know. We just have to start thinking about that. We will have to pick a drop dead date on the pool, probably. Depending on how that goes, so it's getting ready for water, but that's about where we've paused.
So we're in the water-ready stage?
Yeah.
Okay, Mayor?
So yesterday, when we were at that mayor's and four mayor's meeting, my grasp was saying that they are going to have plans as if things were going to happen, but they also have a drop dead date. I think they could do a few small event. For example, it appears that in all the communities, the fireworks would be okay. It might be something we can do. The parade is the difficult item right now. The power, we're not sure it's going to happen either. We're not working on it right now. So the money was, that is in the budget, came from last year. We didn't spend. So there are a few things, the party in the park, we don't know if there is some element that can be had or not. And I don't even know, when you look at the full idea, I can see in a in a building where you play pickleball, that they're going to have the farmer's market or some kind of market happening there. So I don't know if that's something that could be possible during that week. I'm not sure.
Councillor Brown?
I'm a huge advocate on hope and giving this community a little bit of hope. And what I can tell you is, last year, when Councillor Court and I put together with a whole bunch of other people, the idea of having something and having something every day, whether it was painted rocks, whatever it was, the dancers we had in the regalia, that gave hope, the driving of the vehicles. So I don't think that we, as council, my personal opinion, is that as a councillor, I would never say we're not doing anything. That, to me, is just no way. I think that we have, we've already done it and adhered to the guidelines, and we're totally fine. Were we nervous? Councillor Court and myself last year? Oh, absolutely. Like, it was terrifying. But it went really well, and the people adhered to it and supported it and did nothing but were grateful. And it was very humbling. They were very kind. And I feel, I would love to be a part of it for this next year, because I already have people like Mr. Klein, Alan Klein, saying we're ready to go with a bigger parade of, you know, motorcycles and cars, and like, he was all over that. He's already getting back to me. As far as doing a farmer's market, we did it outside because we couldn't do it inside.
Right.
And that worked. The people that were excited about having a farmer's market, we did it, and we did it outside, and it worked fine, and tons of people came to it.
The movie, there was tons of people.
The movie was, I mean, the drive-in. So I personally think we don't just say, nope, we're not doing anything. You know, the world's horrible. I think we got, we have to give them hope. Like, I'm so tired of the
I am.
I'm so tired of the drama around COVID. I understand it, I respect it, but it doesn't mean that we need to stop living.
Councillor, I appreciate.
Absolutely.
I appreciate that notion, and like I said, my grasp is planning as if it could happen, but I also know that I might have to kill way down if the restriction at the provincial level are in place at that time.
Well, I think the premier himself has said that the Calgary stampede's going on this year, so. I think that's a little bigger than Heritage Days or Party in the Park.
Give me a bigger budget, I'll bring it up there.
It sounds like maybe should we reconvene that committee? Get them going again for COVID?
I would love to be a part of it.
Heritage Week planning?
And as you know, you can contact David in us, and
Absolutely.
He has all his contacts.
I mean, if councillor wishes, councillor wishes, but yeah.
Did we do that by bylaw? I can't remember if we did, if it was very ad hoc. I'd have to look, but.
I'm pretty sure it was ad hoc. It was just another ad.
Okay, I'll look at that for next week.
Jill, did you have a comment?
So can I agree with you that hope is necessary at this time? Maybe even more than last year?
Okay, we're gonna charge Councillor Brown to bring hope to the community.
He's good at doing that.
All right. Anything else? Any other discussion? If not, we'll move on to seven D, Second Avenue West.
I'm just going to put some up on the screen again. I just wanted to get you informed as a councillor as to what's about to commence down there. If you've been by, you can see it's they're setting up, setting up some pretty serious stuff down there. Here it is here, one second. So I'll just share on the screen. This is similar to what I sent you, just to interpret these drawings a little bit. What you're looking at here is the site area. So this here, oops, let me get my.
Is this the twinning thing?
So you're on the seven E, rather than seven D?
Oh, did I jump ahead? Oh, Second Avenue West, sorry. I just got to jump screens. There we go, just like that.
There we go.
So I just wanted to keep you again, just for your information. In replacing this sewer and water main on Second Avenue West, we run into this issue where, for some reason, I don't know the historical context, that avenue bottlenecks at Seventh Street. So if you head west down Second Avenue, when you hit Seventh, it's going to come in on each side, and you can see that. when you hit Seventh, it's going to come in on each side. And you can see that here where on this block, it ends here and then it's way out here and so, so on. And that continues, so it's not that way here. The sidewalk is internal. And then on the next block, uh the seven hundred block is really small. It's only two houses wide. And then it continues on uh through the next block. We are going to be sending a communication just to gauge interest to all those homes if they would be okay with removing their sidewalk on Second Avenue. And they may not be, and that's, that's okay, we'll deal with it. But if you get calls about it, uh we have to pull up that entire sidewalk because the water line is so close to it. We can't get a trench and maintain it. We can't keep it. It'll just undermine it. It'll fall off. So it's coming out anyway. And the discussion was, with Brandon and I were talking, saying if we pull that sidewalk out, it buys us uh, you know, a little over a meter on that road and widens it a little. In the winter, when there's on-street parking, that's almost one lane right there. And it's our only avenue, aside from the highway, that's fifty kilometers from end to end. And so, again, I can't speak for why Seventh, Eighth Street jogs over to the right a little bit and why they came.